Hi, everyone. This is Jason from Chair of the Select Board in Nantucket. Sorry, I'm a couple of minutes late. Have we started? Are we on our way? I see Brooke, one of the board member.
Jason, we haven't done anything. We're just letting people in. We've got, um, we've got a lot of attendees.
Okay, great.
We're over ninety. But I think I see you. I see Brooke. Dawn is here and I thought I saw Matt.
I'm here without a picture. I still haven't figured that out yet.
Okay, so we've got, um, we've got our, our phone board.
Show Mark's blackboard is here as well.
So Jason, could I suggest, this is Libby Gibson, Town Manager in Nantucket, that perhaps we go in some kind of order here. Each board calls itself to order. And my understanding is that this is a joint meeting between the boards of Nantucket and the Vineyard, and we aren't really taking in public comment today. It's just discussion between boards on various topics and any other topics. The ones that are listed on the agenda are simply ones that the managers went over and put on a piece of paper. Any, you know, any board member, I suppose, could bring anything up, but we're gonna need a little bit of a way to get organized. And I don't know how you all do, but at our meetings, we use the hand raising function. And I can try to keep track of that, Jason, because Eric is going to sign off in a minute. And, um, maybe proceed that way unless you all on the Vineyard have a different thought. I'm looking at Ja- James Malkin. So James, okay, I'm gonna go by you.
The Tisberry Select Board are present, but we're not deliberating. We're just having a discussion.
Correct.
Won't be calling a meeting to, to open or adjourn.
You, you will not be?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. So Jason, maybe, do you want to start and then we can call the Vineyard Boards and they can either call to order or just discuss without deliberating?
Sure, a call to order the Select War Meeting for October eighteenth. For roll call, just please say you're here, Brooke. Then Matt.
I'm here.
Matt. Fee. I can see that it's here. Okay, Dawn, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if it's okay, I'll just list off the Vineyard Boards and also could all people who are not managers and are not on select boards or boards of select, and please turn your cameras off. It's very distracting to, to have all these cameras on. Thank, thank you. That'd be great. Um, so I think we already heard from Tisberry is not calling itself to order. And so maybe-
To mark board, Select Board call, call to order our October eighteen meeting, joint meeting with Nantucket and other select boards on Martha's Vineyard. Roll call Malkin.
Present.
Doty. I see, I think he's trying to get on.
Present.
And I'm, I'm here. Oh, we're good.
Thank you. And maybe as we go through these boards, you all could just say, each person say, you sort of just did not now, but just say your name. So we all have a little bit of a name and a face.
Um, Libby, I can go for West Tisbury.
Great.
Uh, I'm Cynthia Mitchell Chair, and I see that Jessica Miller is here. Skipper, are you there?
He's there.
He's there, he's just fumbling over there.
Yeah. Situation normal.
There you are. Okay, uh, we will call the West Tisbury Select Board to order.
Thank you. Um, Edgar Town.
Good afternoon, Libby. We're in the same status as Tisbury. I see Mr. Vataroma on. I don't know if he's switched on his camera, but I know we are present.
Yep, Donna Roma is here.
Is it Aquina here? Don't hear anybody from there.
Um, I could jump in, Ryan Rulie, Chair of the Oak Bluffs Board of Selectment, or Select Board. Um, we're in the same position. We do not have a quorum. Emma Green Beach is here, was also a Select Board Member in Oak Bluffs, and our Town Administrator Deborah Potter.
Okay, is that six of, all six of you right? One, two, three, four, five, six.
Dukes County.
Oh, Dukes, good. So, um, I, I don't, sorry, Libby, Christine Todd has her hand raised, but she was muted and skipping.
Sorry, I'm, hi, Libby. Um, yeah, the county commissioners are being represented here. We do have a quorum. I don't know how much you want us to participate in the meeting, but for the record, I'm here, Leon Brathwaite is here, Tristan Israel, and I can't see every screen, but
Dawn, Lea, Dawn's here.
Leopold is here as well.
Great. Oh, I don't mean to be the person running this, but just to recap what, how this came about last spring, there was a sort of a similar meeting with Dukes and Nantucket County, um, where we were getting together to discuss some potential impacts that some amendments and one in particular to the steamship authority legislation might impact both islands. And at the end of that discussion, there was some suggestion that a joint meeting occur with the select boards of both islands to talk about issues of mutual concern. And in my time here with the town of Nantucket, which is about thirty-four years, this has, this happens every now and then. Mostly it's been in person, but obviously not recently. We had some amount of get togethers during COVID. And it seemed quite honestly just easier now that we're all mostly very familiar with Zoom to get, have a get together on Zoom. Maybe someday we cannot do that anymore and be in person. But we, the managers had some email exchange about topics. And we ended up with the list that's, it's on our agenda anyway, housing, short-term rental issues, summer issues, wind farms, food security, traffic issues, roadway and drainage improvements, and climate change and sea level rise. So I don't, I'll turn it back over to you, Jason.
Sure, I'm happy just to be the facilitator and pay attention to the hands, if we like. Jen Ran, your hand's been up for a while.
Yep, I just, um, MVTV had asked for permission to record locally. They emailed, they chatted that they'd like to have permission to record, and I actually was hoping that I could also record for, to get minutes done.
Um, Jen, just so you know, I'm recording the meeting and I have been chatting with Gabby.
Okay.
From TMVTV, and she's gonna connect with our Public Outreach Manager to get a copy of the video.
And you'll send one to me as well.
Um, if you can put your email address in the chat, I can make sure that Florencia sends it to you as well.
Thank you, Erica. Thanks, Jen. So a lot of people here. Thanks everybody for being here. Should we just dig into the easiest subject, housing?
It's so easy, you solved it. Great.
Yeah. Brooke, could you give me a quick update? You and Affordable Housing Trust and Land Bank, I think a bunch of people went over to the Vineyard in the last year or two. So there has been some connections between the two, two islands. Is that right?
Yeah, so I'm now on the Select Board, but I've been on the Nantucket Affordable Housing Trust for about six years. And we took a trip over to your beautiful island last summer, the end of last summer with representatives from our Housing Trust, Town Administration, and the Nantucket Islands Land Bank. And the purpose of that trip was to see, you know, what you guys have successfully done over there with the Island Housing Trust and collaborations between your land bank and, and the Island Housing Trust and other housing organizations. And that was a really fruitful and interesting trip for us. And it inspired some effort to collaborate between the Housing Trust and the Land Bank on our side. Nantucket has made huge strides for addressing our housing crisis, both from a financial perspective and from actually unit creation. We've moved from about two percent affordable housing to six percent on our subsidized housing inventory. We have a number of properties we've acquired that are, we're working on development plans for. And we, of course, have been advocating hard for transfer fee, real estate transfer fee legislation at the State House as yet unsuccessfully, but our town Housing Director Tucker Holland, who's here today, has been working really hard with the coalition of folk who've been advocating to get that legislation, either a statewide enabling legislation or a group of home rule petitions, whichever we can manage to do. Get through the legislature successfully. And so while we haven't achieved that, we're hoping to continue to work on that with an eye toward a steady stream of revenue. Nantucket has used CPC funds for a number of years to execute some borrowing authorizations. Ten million dollars in the last few years of borrowing has been part of our funding. We've allocated, and Tucker can correct me, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy million dollars, the voters have agreed to work toward our housing goals. So we're moving hard on it, but you know, it's chasing us. Housing prices are going up. It's getting ahead of us. It's costing more, and the need is, is growing. So we're excited and we're excited about the partnership we have with folks on the Vineyard and working toward our mutual goals. So.
Thank you, Brooke. Do you have any comments or questions for, for Brooke or what she said? I'm just trying to get us started here.
Okay, Malkin. Now, I'll kick in. Speaking as the Chair of the Housing Bank Review Committee, which is a committee that was formed as part of the Housing Bank Act on Martha's Vineyard, which was roundly endorsed in all six town meetings. The Housing Bank Review Committee's purpose is to determine what, if any, amendments to that act should be made. Uh, once those amendments are suggested by this committee, they will then go to each of the six select boards to be approved or modified. Uh, and then that would become part of the act. The current status of that is we have taken public input. We have heard from a number of people on the island. And we are meeting next Monday with Representative, pardon me, Senator Serre, Representative Fernandez to discuss what input they might give us in terms of the status of things on Beacon Hill and what, if anything, should be modified in that act to enable, to facilitate its passage in Boston. Uh, that's the current status. I will say that what we are gaining from public comment and from our very initial discussions as a committee is a sense on this island that we really aren't uh, in favor of building additional units. We are looking to house people who are resident here, who have jobs here. We're not looking to add more people to the island, but we're looking to add housing for people on the island. And it seems certainly to me, from what I have heard and what I have read, that the issue will come to the towns in terms of considering different zoning as it applies to density as to multifamily structures so that we can accommodate more people, use existing housing, get money to buy that housing. And of course, we're all, both islands, in my opinion, is a phrase I used recently, we're drowning under the weight of money. And the issue is to take housing and make it available for the people who are here. That's currently the state of play with the Housing Bank Review Committee. Thank you.
Anyone else? Emma?
Uh, thank you. I was wondering, does Nantucket use any of your income from short-term rentals towards affordable housing?
Libby?
I would say yes. It hasn't necessarily been specifically dedicated as money coming out of the short-term rental income. But we, Tucker can probably speak more specifically about what we've spent, but we have in the last couple of years started dedicating an annual amount, which I guess you could argue comes from that revenue source or just the general fund because it isn't segregated out into a special fund. We have discussed the possibility of establishing a special fund. We're a little bit concerned if that, as to how to do that because of the restrictions a stabilization fund might present with town meeting approval required to make appropriations and expenditures and things like that. But Tucker, do you have a, a quick way to summarize what our expenditures have been for housing from the budget the last couple of years?
Sure. Um, since the adoption of the short-term rental fee is, uh, our Town Manager Gibson noted, uh, two million dollars a year has been directed to the Housing Office and with that has come several bonding authorizations, um, totaling over sixteen million. So that money is being put to work in a leveraged way.
And I think in the chat, we saw Tucker, he said, in two thousand nineteen, we've allocated sixty-seven million and, and that CPC, that's voted through town meeting, operational.
That's correct, and that would include the sixteen.
Yep. Anything else on housing?
Jason, if I may?
Yeah.
Sorry, one other thing that I forgot to add, actually two other things that have come up to the Housing Bank Review Committee. One is a concern about creating, we are six towns on this island. And part of the Enabling Act, uh, part, part of the Act on Martha's Vineyard creates a bureaucracy to uh, deal with the funds and to administer the process and programs through the Housing Bank money. Uh, there is concern that's been expressed about having another bureaucracy on this island when we have a few already. And so one of the questions, how to do this effectively? Uh, that's one issue. And the other issue that I know that, or I have read that Nantucket is grappling with is the issue of housing being purchased by non-residents used for short-term rentals in the season, making those houses then unavailable for year-round occupancy and tightening up the market by essentially non-resident investors. So that's also something that is up. Thank you.
Well, that's a great segue into short-term rentals. That's, we're already twenty minutes into this. So we just, we can just jump right into there. It's, it's probably been the one of the hottest topics over the last, I'd say eighteen months. And if anybody wants to jump in, Dawn or Brooke or uh, anybody, what we're doing, what we're trying to do right now from last town meeting, Article thirty-nine. With Granicus. Brooke, you can, or Libby, whatever you.
I defer to Brooke. So Nantucket has seen, uh, Citizen Ward articles the last two annual town meetings. And then an additional planning board sponsored article at our most recent town meeting. And, um, the, the dialectic or the split has been, um, the fact that under, we, we have, we have not codified in our zoning bylaw, the right to do short-term rentals in residential, uh, residentially zoned neighborhoods. And as a result, um, there have been a couple of lawsuits um, by neighbors of short-term rentals that have, have the question making its way through the court system to be answered. And so, um, the, the debate last year at town meeting was, should we codify all short-term rentals under our zoning bylaw? And should we regulate them through a regulatory bylaw? Or should we uh, address them differently in the zoning bylaw? And, and our town meeting chose to, there was a, a Citizens Ward article that proposed to, to codify them as a, um, secondary use under zoning bylaw, and the other was to codify them uh, in total under zoning bylaw. And then we also had a regulatory bylaw, Article thirty-nine. And so our town meeting passed the regulatory bylaw, Article thirty-nine, and, and voted to, um, refer the two zoning articles to a work group that was recently established and started meeting last week. It was appointed by a, a group that combined Select Board Members, Planning Board Members, and Finance Committee Members who sort of set up the framework for the work group and the appointment process and who was on it, and that has started meeting. And the idea is for that group to bring a recommendation back to the boards for, um, zoning bylaw and perhaps expansion of the regulatory framework. Uh, the idea being to define are there problems? What are their problems? And how do we solve for them? What do we want to protect in our short-term rental industry? And what, and do we want to regulate it and limit it? Our Article thirty-nine, the, the Board of Health has proposed in the Select Board approved a registration system and licensing system for short-term rentals on Nantucket. And we've hired a firm called Granicus to be the data collection and enforcement arm of that licensing body. So the idea is to collect data so we know what our market looks like, what exists, and that data will help us inform how to move forward in terms of additional regulations, limitations, protections, et cetera. Um, and hopefully we'll have a plan for next year's town meeting that will sort this out by consensus. In this short-term rental work group. I hope that, did I, did I do that sufficiently?
I, I think so. Did it less than four minutes. How is short-term rentals going there, James or, or anyone else? Is it, is it different in every town? Is everybody trying to come together to figure it all out? Is it? Because we, we've struggled with it the last eighteen months, and we're finally, hopefully this work group can come together. And I think there's nine, nine members, took a long time just to get it appointed. To get as, as much experience and wisdom and opinions diversified in this work group. And they have a short, short turnaround to get to our, our next town meeting. James or Jim?
Yeah, I can just say, Jason, I, I think everyone's aware of obviously the second and third order effects of some of these short-term rentals. Likewise, the unintended consequences of some of these short-term rentals. There's been smaller levels of litigation. Egger Town currently is at that four percent, so we have the leverage to go up to that six percent. And I, I think with all the other factors we've mentioned, whether it be affordable housing, likewise, the NSA's discharge permits that are coming down from the DEP and then the consequences of those. I, I think a major discussion is let's have five or six years of reliable data to look at this short-term rental so we can project in the future what this income's gonna be. And in turn, if additional staff needs to be hired, okay, great, for, for the regulation. If we need to, uh, in turn, put some to our current pre-existing capital stabilization fund a certain portion, so we can use it for climate resiliency, uh, short-term rental regulation, uh, DEP wastewater type capital expenses. That's gonna be the path forward. We'll obviously have to go to a town meeting through the requisite capital stabilization, but it, it's still, it's unpredictability of this data. So we have seen a dip in a certain year from quarter one, I think it was of FY twenty and FY twenty twenty, FY twenty, excuse me, and FY twenty-one, we saw a small dip. So there's slight anomalies with the market and, and how people are buying, selling, and maybe there's a thought process that people are buying all at the same time. And in turn, they're, they're not gonna short-term rental, they're gonna wait a year. Likewise, how are these interest rates gonna affect the buying and the purchasing? Because we really haven't seen slowdown. But it, it's still, it goes back to the precedent or the, goes back to the premise, excuse me, of we don't have historical predictability to really make forecasted financial decisions in the future.
Thank you.
I had a question. If I heard correctly, Nantucket has excluded certain properties from being included in the short-term rental. And I think here on the island, I'm not for sure, that all properties that are being short-term rental were covered if they met the definition of longer than to whatever the state rule was for two. Is that true?
We have, we have not limited short-term rentals by regulation yet. We do have some limitations on apartment buildings, which is at the planning board level, but we don't have any regulations that, um, that limit the number of short-term rentals on Nantucket. Or where they're allowed to be.
Tristan?
Yeah, um, it's probably obvious, but I just, it seems to me the problem that I hear with short-term rentals is that when you have verbos and Airbnbs, people who don't live here, you know, owning four, five or six units. Um, how do we, and I know it's not easy. How do we protect? You know, a local person who's doing short-term rentals to try and make ends meet. And I think in the end, that's, uh, you know, that's a major crux of the problem beyond how much revenue is generated. And the concerns that fabrics of neighborhoods are, are being, you know, lost because uh, rentals to people here even short-term are deferred to getting the bigger bucks, you know, from the Airbnb rentals or Verbo or any of those, uh, similar institutions.
James? Jason, and this will be my last comment. There are lots of smart people on this call to talk. Uh, but just for in general information, the all I, the planning boards from all six island towns are having a meeting on short-term rentals in November. No date set on that, but I just found that out. So there is an all-island planning board group meeting on this topic. Thank you.
That's great to hear. Christine?
Jason, thank you. So is it Nantucket's, um, goal, I guess, at some point to, in regulating short-term rentals, um, restrict them in residential neighborhoods? I'm not, maybe I sort of misunderstood what you were saying. Are, are people who live in these neighborhoods filing complaints about short-term rentals? And where do you draw the line there? I guess, I, you know, it's a tough matter to wrap your arms around, as Jim just pointed out, you know, and Tristan, people make their livelihoods sometimes on these rentals. Um, but we are losing neighborhoods. I definitely feel it where I live in downtown Oak Bluffs. A lot of the properties around me have turned from being owner occupied and largely, you know, resided in year-round in many cases to vacation rentals. And you don't even know who's in the homes anymore. So I just wondered if, if Nantucket is your goal in regulation to minimize the number of short-term rentals or focus on the neighborhoods where they might or might not be able to be um, put in place?
The answer you might not like is, it, it depends. It's all that's on the table. And that's why we have this, this work group to try to put some parameters around that. They're gonna dig into those. Like, if we were to regulate and put a cap on it, how would that work? Uh, is it gonna be by neighborhoods? And every, every um, instance that you try to go down that road, there's all these exceptions, and there's these unintended consequences. And that's what we're trying to figure out. Brooke, did you?
Yeah, I, I was, I was gonna say that, um, I mean, I, I'm very hesitant to put forward my ideas about, you know, because I really want this work group to have the leeway to consider everything. But I would say generally with regard to folks who live here um, year-round, that the, the community, I think, my sense of the community is that no one wants to prevent a year-round resident from being able to own a home if they need to short-term rent to make those finances work. So I, I believe that um, even last year on the, on the warrant, on the Citizen Ward article that, um, proposed to limit um, short-term rentals or restrict them for, on, in the zoning bylaw, uh, ended up adding an exemption for- ended up adding an exemption for year round, year round owned and occupied properties from that accessory use limitation or 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 by its nature would would exempt them. So that is a very, very huge component of the conversation over here about what a regulatory framework might look like. And of course, our economy depends on short term rentals, as does yours. And so what is the appropriate balance? I think is the question this group is going to be seeking.
Understood.
Emma, did you have your hand up a minute ago? Are you, you okay?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
You're coming in now, maybe turn your camera off and see if that'll help.
So has, have any towns on the Vineyard or Nantucket seriously discussed the implement?
Have we discussed the implementation of?
Wastewater, I bet.
Like we lost her, she's muted too.
Somebody guess what she was going to say.
Waste, wastewater.
Yeah, kind of coming in now, go ahead.
I was wondering if anyone has seriously discussed the implementation of, is it called the community impact fee? So that the extra tax can be taxed only on like professionally managed short term rentals?
Yes, that that is, that is also a part of it. Libby, it's like you have a lot to say.
I, I don't have a lot to say. I was just going to say, we have touched on that. And I, I think it's probably safe to say we have not finished that discussion.
Thank you. Matt? Matt with no camera?
So here we go. No, on short, short term rentals, one of the issues that we have is when we actually put them to GIS, we found that they were in every neighborhood of the island. It's, we're, we're so late to the game that they are really everywhere. And so I think, you know, my opinion, I'm not speaking for the committee, I'm not on it. But my opinion is that, you know, if we could leave it where it is now, we'd be fine. You know, two thousand of them and they use the way they use. The issue, I believe, going forward is a predictive one, is what happens if we add, you know, X percent a year and we have three thousand or four thousand? And what if they really are edging people out, you know, edging workers out? We've just come, I have a labor intensive business and we've just come off one of the most difficult summers of my forty plus years. There's a lack of housing, there's a lack of employees and there's more demand here for town services, for everything. And when we add short term rentals and we add these, you know, sort of mini hotel businesses, they are requiring all those services as well. So I think, you know, if we could sort of, if I could be king for a day and wave a magic wand, we'd live, I'd leave it where it is now. But we're trying, you know, the committee is trying to find, you know, predictive power to say, where is it going to be in two, three, five, ten years? And how do we adjust it so that we're, you know, so that we are helping islanders stay, workers and islanders stay on island and helping, you know, the town and everyone have employees to work for them. That's the, it's a real issue and I'm sure it's the same with you guys.
Thanks, Matt Warren.
I think Tristan expressed the idea very well that there are some short term rentals that are basically difficult and maybe abusive and others that are very benign. And so I live in a very rural town, Chilmark, with a long tradition of homeowners renting out for two weeks or a month during the summer. And I'm part of that tradition myself. And you know, that continues and I would be really difficult to regulate those kinds of rentals. Maybe it's not bad to have those people register their homes. I could register my home. But we really don't want to change that. And and for someone renting out their home for two weeks in July and then for two weeks in August and getting the summer income, that's a long tradition in my town and people have done it for fifty years. I don't think we want to stop that at all. At the same time, if what Tristan described was someone owning four or five properties and just rolling them over, that is a very different story. I don't know how we make that difference, but I, I would not like to see short term rentals, you know, knocked out of my town. It's been a part of our life for a long time.
Thank you, Warren. One of the questions that keeps coming up here is what problem are we trying to solve? What are we trying to do? We need the data to collect it. We need regulations to be able to I guess, control the the bad apples, right? Because it is, is a big part of our economy in our year round residents as well. Any thoughts on this?
I, I promised I wasn't going to say anything else, but I can't help myself. To Warren's point, which I agree with, there are people on this island who have for generations got a significant amount of their income from renting houses. I think what will be discussed at the All Island Planning Meeting is there seems to be in some parts of the island, a sense that short term rentals for six, eight, six, four weeks a year by resident voting town members might be the way to go. That's, that's what I am hearing and we are a long way from that being codified in any way.
We, we have a large population here as well that whether the house has been handed down to the family or, you know, they can't really afford to be here in the summer without renting out two, three or four weeks. And those are, you know, there's a, so the portion of our summer residents that also have to do that, who are mindful, who are a part of the community. And so we're, we're trying to take all these different examples in and not put in regulations that's going to hurt one more than the other. Or or bylaws, Matt?
Has the, has the Vineyard experienced any of the sort of, what is it? You know, they, any of the different commercial groups, have they started operating on the Vineyard? There, there's some here that are now coming and sort of doing, they're setting up short term rental businesses. And they are sort of doing, you know, multiple people can buy a house together, you know, that type of thing. They're doing tenants in commoncy, commons, I believe. And they're, you know, sort of buying multiple properties for this. Is that happening on the Vineyard as well?
I am told it is. I do not have specifics, but I have been told by some friends in the real estate business that people either individually, groups or firms have been looking around at buying stuff for two reasons. One is the annual income from renting in the season. And the second reason, of course, is the appreciate, the expected anticipated appreciation of that property going forward. So that's the, the play that some of these potential owners are considering making.
Bill?
I, I've, I'm a real estate broker on the island and I've just sold a few properties to people who are interested in, in high end luxury rentals. And people are buying them with contracts from a company called Inspirado, Inspirado, I guess. Looking to rent or guarantee them two months of rent at a certain rate, high rate. And they're being bought with, with, you know, with the idea that they'll gain enough equity over a twenty year period and it'll be a great investment for them. So that's happening. There's some companies I've actually worked with and decided not to pursue anything on the island that were working on a form of fractional ownership, buying blocks of time and owning a part of a deed for that. But that seems to be not really in their business model right now because of such a short season. So they're here and they're looking, but they're looking for, you know, luxury, luxury properties more than anything else.
Thank you, Bill. There is, Libby, how long did we plan for this? This is an hour or as long as it wants to go?
I don't think we necessarily had a timeframe, but I think we're planning on about an hour, maybe much more than an hour and a half.
Okay. Do you want to jump into summer issues, stormwater? Some other things on the list, wind farms?
I'd be curious how Nantucket is dealing with traffic management during the high season. And you know, I know it, it is very difficult on the Vineyard with the increased traffic. And our planning has moved in the direction of, you know, reviewing projects, not based on the high season, but off season traffic conditions, similar to on the mainland, not developing projects based on, you know, the holidays peak. But I'm just wondering what your experience has been in terms of managing traffic coming to the island and vehicle and truck traffic in particular. It's a challenge for us. And Mass DOT, their presence on Nantucket and maintenance and those kinds of issues. Just curious.
Libby?
Um, okay, so this is just, we could talk for hours.
Just headlines, yeah.
So we have a number of traffic related, I guess I would say initiatives maybe underway. We've talked about paid parking. We have had some discussion about truck traffic. We have zero DOT presence on the island. We have basically zero truck weight limitations almost anywhere. And that most definitely has an impact on our roads. The ways to handle that are, you know, very difficult because we have dependency on some of these trucks coming over here and they range obviously from food and supplies to construction materials and fuel. And I, I'm not even sure what to tell you, Jay, about what we're doing about it because it, it.
Well, I was thinking more of the day trippers with the vehicles coming over the weekend and and those kinds of issues. How you may incentivize reducing that volume?
We.
It's a tough task.
It is, it is a tough task. We are very proud of our regional transit authority, the NRCA. I know Paul is on and she could maybe speak to it. But we really try to advertise a lot and encourage people to take alternative modes of transportation. One of the select board's goals in a transportation focus area that we have in our strategic plan is to reduce vehicle use and traffic congestion. And we're constantly working on ways to do that. It, it's interesting though, because on the one hand, we're focusing on ways to do that. So now, you know, there's a lot of advances in modes of transportation like electric bikes and scooters. And we are seeing a huge influx in both of those things. And they're on the bike paths and on the side of the road and they go really fast. So now we're starting to talk about how do we regulate those? But we also have people who are saying, well, yeah, maybe try to regulate them, but don't get rid of them because we need them. Because hopefully people will use those more than they'll use cars. We, we don't really have the, the day tripper car use that you probably have because our car ride is so much longer and it's so much more difficult to get car reservations, especially in the summer, year round really. But definitely in the summer. So a lot of people who are here, whether they have rental houses or seasonal homes, have their cars here already. And Turo has made an appearance here. I don't really know quite how popular it is. Uber, of course, is around and we have some cabs. So those things, you know, our cabs in particular are encouraged so, you know, that people can use that instead of bringing a car. We're, we're always talking about ways to incentivize people to use the shuttle and just, just other modes. But I, it is definitely very challenging.
Libby, I think before the pandemic, I'm going to use the pandemic as an excuse here. We were starting to plan a little bit through the strategic plan, as you alluded to, trying to put resources into sidewalks and bike paths and give more places and make them safer for people to walk. Probably harder on your island, there's, there's much more space to go between cities and towns, towns. And so we started to make our way on that. We started really digging the parking and then the pandemic hit. And right before the pandemic, we were around fifty thousand, our summer population. And then during the pandemic, and now we're at sixty five plus or minus some. So now we're back to kind of being reactive and we have to get back to the, to the planning. It's just my, my quick take on it. We were starting to, to make some progress. Jim?
Malcolm?
Nope, me, maybe? Libby, you said that you have no DOT presence on the island. Do you have state highway on Nantucket?
We have one state highway.
And who maintains that?
The town maintains it through an agreement with DOT.
Interesting. They've, they've asked us for a similar agreement and we've said no. Because we don't just have one and the, you know, it's, it would be quite burdensome. But we know that we know that, you know, we don't have the presence that we used to have. We used to have two full time Mass DOT employees here that would maintain the roads. Plus they took great advantage of Sheriff's Community Services Program in terms of trash pickup and the like. And that community services program seems to have gone away during COVID and has not come back. And they're down to one person and no community services program. And, you know, we had a conversation quite recently about trash on the side of the road. And we're dealing with it somewhat locally in enforcement because most of it is people going to the dump. But it's a much larger issue of, you know, the roads do need to be maintained. We have dead deer on the regular that need to be picked up and they won't pick them up. And, you know, trying to find a way, they've even said to me when I call maintenance at District Five, we know it's our problem to solve, yet it isn't solved. And so, you know, it's interesting that you folks did make that agreement because when they came to us, we said we won't do that because the, the burden would be ever increasing and it's not something we could take on.
We, we did enter into discussions with Mass DOT for Tisbury, Jen. And the issue for us was much of their infrastructure, drainage catch basins and these kinds of structures haven't truly been maintained. And, and they were looking at the price point that they wanted to come in at was much lower than what we envisioned that we would need in order to maintain the roads and make repairs and, and those kinds of issues. Presently, we have an agreement to do road sweeping, street sweeper on Beach Road because of their diminished presence on the Vineyard. They don't sweep the road as often as it's required to be done. So these, the, the Mass DOT contribution on the Vineyard, you're, you're correct, has diminished. And I, I didn't know that Nantucket didn't have any presence. That is news to me.
Does Nantucket have a state forest?
Yes.
And do you, is that staffed? Does DCR staff the state forest?
Um, no. I mean, they're not here full time. I, I guess occasionally they come here and look around, but we, we don't, we don't like clean them or anything like that.
We, you know, we don't have, we have a similar problem with, we have what the state forest is three thousand acres or five thousand acres and it is in desperate need. And it is in desperate need of constant maintenance, you know, the tree fall and. Um, tree clearing because of the fire danger is enormous and DCR cannot maintain consistent staff here. In no small part due to housing, even though they own a house. Um, they won't let anyone live in it, so. Uh, it's another issue we've been dealing with here with little movement from the state.
That is interesting and that that's making me think I should write a note to myself to find out about who, when are they going to come and clean out dead trees? Um, but but we haven't really been doing that. I think they they do occasionally come over and do that, but probably not anywhere near as often as it should be done.
We go to Ryan.
Excuse me, can I just ask Emma Green Beach from our board is I think still in the waiting room. She got bumped out. Could someone let her in? Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. As we're getting close to the hour mark. Do you want to, uh, Matt, we can hear you. Do you want to switch over to coastal resiliency? Climate change, we've we've had some really great progress there in our. Um coastal resiliency advisory committee, I won't, I won't say the acronyms for that. But if anybody wants, Matt, if you wanted, or Libby, do you want to talk a little bit about? Some of the progress we've made there?
I just noticed that um as luck would have it, our coastal resilience coordinator, Vince Murphy, I think just came on. Um, maybe. Vince, maybe could you give your um couple of minute overview of the coastal resiliency plan?
Uh, yes, I can give a very quick and brief overview. Um, am I being heard okay?
Yeah.
Super uh kind of two-minute elevator page shift, if that's possible. Uh, in uh twenty nineteen, the town took up the idea of developing a coast resilience plan that came from hazard mitigation plan. Uh, which was only completed earlier that year. The pandemic slowed us down a little bit, um, as it slowed down many things and then in, uh, I think it was June twenty twenty, we got underway finally. Um, by August, we had a contract in place and then in um. We just started developing to the CRP with a focus on coastal flooding, coastal erosion and sea level rise and how that will make both worse. Then that took about fourteen months to complete, uh, and we finished it around about this time last year. It was presented to the select board and a couple of weeks later it was accepted. We now have an active coastal resilience plan. That has forty active recommendations that we're starting to work our way through and develop uh solutions for. Uh, my little boy says hi. So uh we're developing the plans, uh, working up what they're going to look like, changing them from the concepts that they currently are. To active uh recommendations and working out how we're going to do the extraordinary work of developing. Uh, the forty plans into reasonable efforts uh to develop uh ways of saving and protecting each community. Uh, that we looked at around the entire island and county, uh, because we took in Tocano and Muskegat as well. Then. There there's active plans coming out of it, but the next thing that we're going to try and look at, not to go too far down the road, is a climate action plan, as I understand it. Commission has developed a wonderful climate action plan. I got to review that and. Myself and the Coast Resilience Advisory Committee have reviewed it, looked at it and thought, well, would that be a nice place for us to, the community to try and develop something similar?
Thanks Vince. My my go-to example is, uh, we had, we appropriated money for. Either reconstruction or fortified a Millie's Bridge, very important. Uh, bridge out in Maticet and with the coastal resiliency, uh, just a plan and the committee. It looked at and it reallocated the money to do more shoring up around it, fixing up it a little bit, but if we wouldn't have had this planning in place. Then I I don't think we would be able to to flex that appropriation appropriately to add in the coastal resiliency element to. Then just fixing this bridge, which didn't fix anything around it. So Vincent, uh, the very, a very um. Uh, dedicated volunteer board has really taken it far. James?
Thanks, James. Um, just quickly, Ben Robinson is on this Zoom somewhere in the ninety people. And he is head of the Martha's Vineyard Commission's uh climate action task force. I know they've done, had some conversations with Nantucket. But if you want to allow him to speak, he could bring you up to speed on what the Martha's Vineyard Commission is doing on behalf of the island. In addition to what each town's uh climate groups are doing.
Thanks, Jim. Should I just go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so um I chair the climate action task force at NBC. Um, we've instituted a number of projects. You mentioned the CAP plan, the climate action plan that we've completed. Uh, back in June and now we're well into establishing and an uh an implementation. Phase for that, uh, but I do want to highlight one project that we were working on with Chuck Larson on Nantucket. Uh, going all the way back to when we were considering it through an MVP process, uh, but we. We've been talking with the Army Corps of Engineers Research and Development Center. Uh, on a comprehensive plan for both islands, looking at a whole host of things. And we are getting almost to the point of executing contracts with the Army Corps. Through a Planning Assistance for State grant, uh, with coordination with CZM. Looking at water resource issues from drinking water to stormwater to wastewater to ports and uh and harbors. And the idea there is to develop. A a set of plans that we can then forward along with Army Corps. So at the end of that, hopefully there are shovel. Shovel-ready uh programs that will start uh developing with Army Corps as we think about our coastal resources. And especially our ports, our water supplies and wastewater. The other aspect of that plan is a more comprehensive look at current capacities and supply chains. And I think we've talked a little bit about that in different instances already on this call. So those, that's an important project that's upcoming. It'll probably really kick off in the first phase, uh, which is the next sort of three to six months. Um, wrapping up probably sometime in the late spring of twenty twenty-three. And that phase will be basically uh the Army Corps doing an intensive review of literature from the islands. Uh, 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 an intensive stakeholder engagement outreach and then developing more specific plans for each. Uh, for each island moving forward to look at. So that's, that's an important project that I think we can all. Sort of start to weigh in on as we roll out sort of the stakeholder and public part of that in the next few months. So look forward to that this winter.
Thank you, Ben.
Welcome.
Those two minutes after five, I'm I'm fine. Keep going and people can can take off a- as needed, everyone is busy. But we can uh. Any more comments on? Yep, go ahead, Warren.
Yes, I mean, this this issue of uh sea level rise and on Martha's Vineyard, we have really four. You know, major harbors and each one is going to be very much affected by a one-foot or two-foot. Sea level rise. I don't know if we have any uh coordinated plan to deal with that, but um. Clearly that, you know, Vineyard Haven, Egbertown, Oak Bluffs. Menemsha on Martha's Vineyard are all going to be really affected if there is a one-foot or two-foot sea level rise. Does your coastal resilience plan? Able to deal with issues in your harbor, you know, where everybody owns a little piece of the harbor and has an investment in it? And uh, how do we like? Take everybody's building and say it has to be on stilts and in in some of our harbors that includes a lot of businesses and. Uh, or a gas station. Uh, what do we do with a gas station that is? Uh, you know, going to be one foot underwater. You know, this this sea level rise is going to be a serious problem for our harbors. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about how we're dealing with that.
I can assist, Jason.
Go ahead, Vince.
So when we undertook the um Nantucket CRP planning and we did a whole lot of public engagement, we also tried to understand the numbers. One of the biggest things that we found that we were missing was we didn't understand our risk enough. So one of the first uh reports that we generated about halfway through the CRP development was to undertake a risk assessment. And we kind of gave it timeframes. We started out by looking at twenty thirty, then looking at twenty fifty and then twenty one hundred. And then what amount of water we might be able to expect to see in. Uh, our harbor and our downtown areas and say in Maticet Harbor as well and then. Put numbers to the risk and then once we knew the risk, we were to then look for uh localized and um workable solutions. So for our downtown area, uh, we're lucky we had a Noah tide gauge. We were looking at uh under certain circumstances and. Brand-new information that came out from Noah in February, uh, anywhere up to about six and a half feet of sea level rise, six point six six feet of sea level rise. In Nantucket Harbor between now and twenty one hundred, so that's a a lot of risk. So to, in order to deal with that, one of the solutions that we looked at was this thing called the downtown neighborhood flood barrier. It's a system of raised roads, uh, connected bulkheads and um. Uh, beach berms that all connect up to each other to provide um. A a a a measure of resilience through the whole downtown area. It's a concept in the CRP uh that has proven very useful. It was one of those things that was um discussed at uh public shretts and kind of came from the public shretts where we collected up information. Uh, public ideas, public feedback. We took it to a second public sharette, flew it as a kite and see what people thought of it with some drawings. And it got huge traction and it worked out that way. So it was very much a public-oriented process. And it worked well for the downtown area where we have all of our historic buildings. Uh, our main infrastructure and our main connection to the mainland at the Steamship Authority and Highline Dock. So we looked at how we could get around uh the risk out to the end of the century, covering almost eighty years. Then another parts of the island where we have large erosion risk, we had to come up with other solutions. But this is what we did. We took area by area, right down to almost street by street in some instances to develop um. Solutions and now we're in the position, we've got these on paper and now we're trying to carry them forward and trying to find grants. And other funding sources uh to try and develop, uh, develop those up into, you know, plans, uh, sorry, architectural drawings and. Proper plans that can be taken to conservation commissions and then work done. It's a, it's an involved process, but you have to start by understanding the numbers, understanding your risk in in detail.
Thank you, Vince. Tristan?
Yeah, Ben, I'm terrible with acronyms. Maybe I'm getting old, so I get them all messed up, but uh, the uh. MVP, the Massachusetts Vulnerability Program that we've done here, and I think a lot of communities, me, Ben could speak more to it, but that really. Shows us. Where we might want to put our bucks to mitigate a sea level rise and. Where it might be worth it or where, you know, for uh small solutions and large solutions and where it might not be worth it. Um, and I think those are decisions, you know, we have to make because we're not going to be able to afford stopping everything everywhere. Um, but that MVP, uh, the mass vulnerability, something or other.
Preparedness program.
Thank you. Has been, you know, it's a really uh been helpful and I think a good start for us. I mean, Ben, you might want to elaborate more. On that.
Well, I'd I'd only add that, you know, Nantucket did their MVP program and identified, I think, supply chain is is the number one priority under that. And the idea of the MVP is you prioritize your your risks and your concerns uh based on community input. And then you can start applying to the state for MVP funding. And that's actually how that Army Corps study started. Is we were talking with Chuck Larson about supply chain, uh, because Tisbury actually had supply chain is a is a vulnerability as well. Because we host the year-round port. Um, and that's how we we've we've we evolved from an MVP grant. Uh, to a PAS, Planning Assistance for State Grant, which is a fifty-fifty grant with the federal government. Um, and so that's, that that was an outgrowth of of a conversation around the MVP plan.
Thank you, Ben. Sounds like you guys have done a lot of work as well in this area.
Yeah, I I mean, I would say that um. You know, with the with climate change, we're we're learning as we go. There's no, there's no book, nobody dealt with climate change before. And so I think we're, you know, we we struggle to know what to do next and what's the right priority and where do we want to put our limited resources? Um, and I think the collaborations that we can have, you know, inter-island is only going to help us organize ourselves. So that we are being responsive with the limited resources that we have.
I'm on the Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee and I've been from the beginning, uh. You know, and I think we've got a great plan. I think the interesting part for me, though, is how are we going to pay for this? And everyone has great ideas and then it gets to the how do we pay for it? So, you know, those are the discussions that are going to come uh soon and I hope, I my whole feeling is if there's enough. You know, if there's enough value, if there's enough people who are willing, you know, to pay part of it or some of it. Then, you know, you're more, and it's not going to harm anyone else. You're more likely to do it. You're not going to spend, you know, a billion dollars to save two houses. That are try to, you know, hold off on two houses and we have some areas that are going to have to be retreat and people. Are very hesitant to have, to want to do that. And I think the first step, this is what I say at the committee level all the time. The first step of retreat is to stop going forward. And that's going to be hard, you know, how do we not build uh in the, you know, in the areas near ponds and in the at-risk areas. Around the harbor, how do we not add density and ground cover and everything else when there's so much money to be made in those areas? And so I think, you know, sort of that's going to be some of our first. Uh, you know, not first issues, but those are going to be, those are not going to be easy here because of the values, but I think, you know, that is. Sort of if if I, you know, so so anyway, that I think the first step for us in some ways is to not go forward as much. And uh, you know, sort of target our uh development and target what we need to do into the areas that are less vulnerable.
Thank you, Matt. I'm just putting our coastal resiliency plan in the comment section. Roy asked. Christine?
Sorry, sort of to Matt's point, you know, where's the money going to come from? And I guess my question to both. Nantucket and the towns in Martha's Vineyard is what, what collaborative opportunities are out there? That, you know, if we were to jointly go after funding. We would have a much better chance of significantly increasing the dollars that we may get for Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. As opposed to going after them individually. I'm wondering if the thought process on Nantucket and and the towns on the vineyard. Is one that is leading in that direction that, you know, I don't, I don't know personally of what. Opportunities may be increased if we were to uh work together on certain funding requests. But I can't imagine it would hurt.
James?
Well, to follow on from Christine is one thing that I've been puzzling over and fretting over. For the past two and a half years, which is the extent of my time on the Steamship Authority Board. And I think that there's a joint project that has to do with the Steamship Authorities. Uh, dock and the access roads to that pier. Uh, in Nantucket, the Woods Hole Terminal. And its location, which is facing the northeast and the Vineyard Haven Terminal and Beach Road that leads. There as well as to our hospital. And that sounds to me at least at first blush or second or third blush. To be a joint area where potentially there is federal money that could be pursued. Or grant money that could be sued collectively. And then just throw that out there as an idea.
Thank you, James. Christine, I can't agree more on on doing those those type of things together because they're so large. And Matt, you said a billion dollars, but I mean, you were joking, but you weren't joking, not over, not over twenty thirty years. So it's going to have the fed- federal and state. Help and support, we're going to need it. So but we'd be much stronger if we're both on the same page, go walking forward together. Asking for help and we have plans. Here's where we need the help. We've done, we've done the work, you know, Ben and Vince and everybody else involved.
Agreed.
Jeffrey's uh put in a comment. I'd be interested to hear if the work of remain Nantucket has offered productive beneficiary collaboration. Jeffrey, do you mean in, when it comes to environmental and coastal resiliency? Or just in general?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, it seems like that's a big part of of what their focus is, but I, you know, beyond that. Uh, anything else, I know that they're, that seems like a big one for them. But but just generally, you know, that idea of, you know, sort of public-private in particular. In particular, in these places where there's a lot of private money, uh, that's generally not. Channeled. Well, or not channeled on the the sort of public level. It's more going to private nonprofits. I just wonder about that one. They seem to be really doing some interesting stuff.
Vince, do you want to? Top of remaining when it comes to coastal resilience?
Yes, I can. So uh, Remain did a very interesting project at the same time we were doing the coastal resilience plan. It was called envisioned resilience in Nantucket. It overlapped within the CRP. It was invaluable in some ways because we got to see what the. Student projects were doing at the same time and cherry pick out some of those ideas as they came out and tried to um, put them through the. Uh, the 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 CRP method sheet and see if that would work and some of them did. Um, so that was useful. Um. The, some of the characters in Remain, I'm not wishing to name names, they have a terrific staff and um. I'm I'm working with them on a regular basis on certain projects and developing up certain ideas. They have a particular focus on the downtown area in particular. And we're trying to see if we can develop up a few projects with them. And I'm trying to match them up with CRP, uh, coastal resilience plan ideas. But that's not the only source I'm chasing. I'm chasing any type of money. I'm never going to turn down money in some ways, just so long as it comes from a vetted source. The other ones that um, I I, people were asking about earlier. That we can chase for money um, at the state level, not just MVP. But another state office called CZM, the Office of Coastal Zone Management, then there, that they have specific grants that come up. Um, usually in the springtime uh, for uh, coastal resilience and we've chased those before. Then in a larger sense, um, there's the SNAP, uh, SNEP, um, uh. The Southeast New England uh, planning uh, development areas run through FEMA. Um, they have grants as well that come up through this. That's how they channel kind of uh, larger. Federal money down towards local agencies uh, to try and get other resilience and water-based um. Uh, initiatives off the ground, chasing uh, federal money and trying to go after larger grants. We're always going to suffer because we're up against. Much, much bigger cities like Boston and New York and uh, uh. New Orleans, who can put massive resources into chasing those kind of grants. So the idea of teaming up with another municipality to put forward larger. Uh, grant proposals would obviously benefit um, e- everybody to train. Secure those kind of monies to get better resilience for the islands in general.
Yeah, Jeffrey, overall, Remain has a really great formula. Uh, they'll come to the town and say, we care about this, this and this. How can we help in these areas? And then we come back and say. You know, we need an energy officer. This was, I don't know how long ago, Libby, um. Eight years ago, six years ago, and they said, okay, we'll fund it for a year or two. You see if it works, gives you time to get into the budget and. Then so that sometimes they do positions or programs with housing. But the 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 formula I really like is they say, you know, how can we help? It's in their specific areas. Um, but but they just, like Tucker just put in there in the comments, it's a catalyst. It's a feasibility study. It's. Something to to push it along. Um, to to speed up the pace of of municipality. Productivity, yeah.
Are you guys a USDA rural community? Do you guys qualify as?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's five eighteen. Last question will be, is there any? Better or different ways that we can work together? Kind of similar to Christine asking the question of, um, you know, is there things that we can do together? For coastal resiliency the next, you didn't say five or ten years, but that's what was in my head. How do we do it? Together. Is any other ways that we can work together? I I think what Brooke opened up with when. The housing leadership of of the island went and met with all of your. Leaders, that was really helpful for us. We love to see what you're doing. It's not always exactly the same thing. Our islands are a a little different, but. Uh, it's really helpful for us to understand what you're doing. Jim?
I think the other thing to to know and. Perhaps board members know this and perhaps they don't, is that the. Seven town administrators are in regular contact. So. You know, we, we talk amongst ourselves and talk across the water to Libby and. So, you know, these. We are working together sometimes, even if the. Seven town boards aren't totally aware of it, that the seven town administrators are cooperating regularly.
Thank you, Jen. Christine?
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful to have these meetings on a consistent basis and not. You know, once a year, once every couple of years. Um, I think that we, as we talk with each other. We begin to discover um, how we can collaborate, you know, who's working on what and is there an opportunity for us to get. On that same path with you or you with us that would. You know, increase not only our ability to get funding for certain efforts, but to be able to access. And you know, the 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 best possible solution to a problem we might be facing. So. I I think it's really important that we continue this level of communication on a regular basis and not. Once in a while. It's great that the town administrators are in touch with with each other. I'm really happy to hear that. But I think that the select boards, counties need to be on the same page with them and be aware of what's going on because we all. Reach out to different areas in different ways and to bring that, all of that knowledge and experience together, I think is really important and will help us both.
Thank you, Christine. I agree with uh, having more of these meetings and it could be specific to certain things. It could be, you know, this was kind of. We'll throw everything out there and see what what lands, but it could just be housing or. Food security or behavioral health or, you know, social services. It could be a lot of different things. Ryan, I saw you pop on. Did you have something?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just had to step up for a few minutes. I just got back, but uh, uh, kind of off topic, but I know a lot of you folks are coming over next weekend to the vineyard for the. Uh, Island Cup game. So I just wanted to reach out, say good luck and uh, welcome to all the whalers and uh, go vineyard, of course.
I was just going to say, I think to say something like, well, there's one day we can't really, really collaborate too much, but the others sixty-four days, we're fun, we should really work together more.
You got it.
Well, uh, I think um, Bob Johnson suggested uh, in the comments, perhaps the seven town managers. Identify prioritized ways the group can work together going forward. That's a good idea. Libby, anything? Any of the ways that um. The boards work together or it sounds like the town manager are already communicate pretty well.
Yeah, I just echo what Jen said. Um. And we can, we could certainly get together and um. Think about. More opportunities.
Anything else to to close it up?
Thank you, Libby, for pulling us together and the town managers as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nantucket.
Absolutely.
Tristan, closing, closing remarks?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, on the housing issue, especially where we are all working together that as this legislative session opens up, you know, that. Uh, just as a voice of, you know, there are seven, well, seven, six towns and Gosnell there and and and. You know, Nantucket that uh. That we work together and communicating to our legislators uh. You know, to to advance the ball on this, um, because I really, I think this next session. You know, I think our goal to get this done.
Thank you. Anything else? James?
Let's live long and prosper.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I think we called order. So uh, is there a motion, Brooke? Is Brooke, oh, so Brooke's gone, Don's gone. So we're out of. Just Matt and I, so we're already out of uh. Out of our meeting. Anybody else?
County's good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much for this, Jason. Appreciate you leading the discussion.
My my pleasure. Compared to some of the discussions we we have here, so that was an easy one.
I I share your pain.
I think most of us do.
Yeah.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.